Welcome to the October 10, 2022, meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Harris, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Father God, I ask that you give the city leaders, the staff, the wisdom so that they may solve problems, distinguish between right and wrong, and bring order, stability, and prosperity to our community. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Myers, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Meinter? Mr. Poole? Mr. Murray? Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Pajali?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Commissioners, may I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Meinter?
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion? Hearing, without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. May I have a motion to excuse Mr. Murray?
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion? Without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved also. May I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Poole?
So moved.
But a motion and a second discussion? Without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved also. Those three commissioners are excused. My understanding is that Commissioner Poole may be just running late, but we will rescind that excuse if he shows up. Commissioners, do you have before you the minutes of our meeting of September 26? What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington?
I move that we accept the minutes of the September 26 meeting and dispense with the formal reading.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion? Without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved also. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the microphone, identify yourself, name and address, and we'll listen to your agenda comments. Seeing no one rushing to the microphone, I presume there are none. I believe we have the pleasure to announce the promotion of a lieutenant in our fire department. I will turn the floor over to Chief Dimico and our city manager.
I, Dana Portantello, recognize my fundamental duties as a lieutenant in the City of Sandusky Fire Department. I solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession, my safeguarding of lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fire and disaster.
I, Dana Portantello, recognize my fundamental duties as a lieutenant of the City of Sandusky Fire Department. I solemnly swear to uphold the standards of my profession, my safeguarding of lives and property of our citizens against the threat of fires and disaster.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America and the State of Ohio. The City of Sandusky, in its own good and bad end of my office, has a simple, public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored as long as I remain a lieutenant in the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I promise to obey the duly constituted laws of the United States of America and the State of Ohio and the City of Sandusky, and to maintain the office as simple, public faith, leadership, and trust to be honored for as long as I remain a lieutenant in the City of Sandusky Fire Department.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good for my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability, so help me.
I will continually strive to serve our community and to be an influence for good for my fellow officers and firefighters to the best of my ability, so help me, God.
Congratulations, the City of Sandusky.
Yeah, we're all set. Thanks. Dana, just stay there one second. Stay right up there one second.
You have to stay there so we can embarrass you just a little bit.
Through you, President Brady. Lieutenant Portantello has been a member of Sandusky Fire Department since March 13, 2015. He's here tonight with his parents, his wife Julie, and his three boys. Previously, to work for Sandusky Fire Department, Dana was a master sergeant in the Air Force Reserve and worked for a private EMS company. Dana is a certified paramedic. He's a member of the dive team. He's a member of Sandusky Fire Department's Health and Safety Committee. He has worked out of class on a regular basis, filling in for officers when they were off, proving himself to other department members by coordinating company training and his strong determination to make Sandusky Fire Department a better organization. Congratulations, Dana.
Congratulations. You obviously come with great credentials, and you're joining, not joining, but you are rising in the ranks of a wonderful fire department that we take great pride in, and I know that you will make us proud. And your entire support staff are welcome to stay for the entire meeting, or you can celebrate out in the hall and vacate. Commissioners, do you have before you several communications from staff recommending various legislation? Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion? Without objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Next on our agenda is we have a presentation on the Great Lakes Community Action Partnership Program. Ms. Amy Overmeyer is going to present that. And just kind of for background, this organization is what we, most of us, know as our CHIP program, which is a home repair program on behalf of the city and Erie County. And I think most of us know, but I want to get it written into the record, that CHIP provides home repair assistance for a variety of needs, including furnace replacements, water heater replacements, electrical upgrades, plumbing upgrades, and a lot of ADA modifications. So those are all things that benefit our entire community. So we're pleased to have you here, Ms. Overmeyer, and the floor is yours.
All right. As Mr. Brady stated, I am Amy Overmeyer. I'm with Great Lakes Community Action Partnerships, also known as GLCAF. We formerly were WSOS, which stood for Wood, Sandusky, Ottawa, and Seneca Counties. But the CHIP program now services 31 different communities in the northwest state of Ohio. So obviously, we outgrew our name. I am here to talk to you today about the CHIP program, which is Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program. For the city of Sandusky, we do receive funding from the state to, and GLCAF is the one who administers the funding. What we can do is we do home rehabilitations for low-to-moderate-income families, homeowners. With the home rehabilitation, we have our inspectors. They go into the home, they do a full inspection, including pest and lead inspection, and they do a write-up on what needs to be done to bring the home up to code. We can do anything from getting rid of lead. We can do furnaces, ACs. We do windows, doors, ADA modifications. Basically, anything that needs to be done to the home, we can assist with. The state used to have a cap on how much work we could do in a home, which was about $64,000. And in this day and age, with the price of materials going up, the lack of contractors, we are seeing them approve jobs anywhere from that $64,000 to, we recently just did one for $108,000. So what that comes with the family is that they are required to stay in the home for at least five years after the work is completed. We do offer warranties. They get their manufacturer's warranties, as well as they get labor warranties for a year beyond the assistance. After five years in the new grant, 100% is forgiven. So that just changed this year. It used to be that they would have to pay back 20% when they sell or transfer their home, and under the new PY-21, it is 100% forgiven. So, and along with that, we also offer the weatherization program, or HWAP. That is a state-funded program as well. And that program, we do renters, we do homeowners. Basically, they just have to apply, see if they qualify income-wise, and we can check out the furnace, AC, water heater, and then also blow insulation in the home, making the home more energy-efficient, and talk to the homeowners or the tenants about how to be more energy-efficient. So that's what I have for you. Any questions?
Questions or comments? Questions?
Ms. Chairman. I'm just curious, what is the average turnaround time in regards to the review of these, of the applicants?
The wait time?
An approval, yeah.
It varies. Right now, the grants are on a two-year cycle. So if we identify all of the homes at the beginning of the two years, then we have to wait two additional years for Erie County to apply for more funding. City of Sandusky, we have, I checked before I left today, we have approximately 34 applicants in the pipeline, and we can assist anywhere from eight to 15 homes in the city of Sandusky, so.
Mr. Waddington?
I'd like to ask, what's the contact for senior citizens? Because we have a lot, I know in the city of Sandusky that could probably need some help, or they're probably not aware of it. You know, they're not computer literate, a lot of them, so.
Yep, and I-
I have access to it, so.
I left some brochure information, and it's out front in the lobby. So basically, what they do is they just contact our office, and then we take, our intake staff takes their information and sends them an application. We also do have staff that can go to their home to help them with the application process as well.
I guess the follow-up then is, how can I make them aware? It's nice here, if they don't have a computer, tell them to know that this is available again. I've circled through several CHIP programs in the past. As far as, how do we get it on, I guess, the street, you know, so more people are aware of it?
A lot of, well, homes that don't have computers. It's basically word of mouth. We don't have anything that is, you know, we don't have any marketing money. It's basically all word of mouth. We do utilize the city's website and things like that, but like you said, people who don't have computers. It is also, when we do get funded, there's a release that goes out in the newspapers to let citizens know that way as well. But we welcome any ideas, and especially contractors. We are really struggling to find contractors to work in the program.
I guess my last point then. Mr. Webster, our city manager, at one time, we had the flyer that we sent out, like maybe three times a year. This could be a good, you know, we mailed all the homes. I know it's expensive, but there's a lot of people. I had mentioned you a few weeks back. I know a lady that contacted me. She doesn't want to leave her house, but she needs a roof repaired, needs some windows done, and they have no way of knowing, you know, to follow this up. I wonder if we could do something like that?
Through the Commission President, Commissioner Waddington, we've talked about bringing back a newsletter of some type. So I know that's on Mr. Horstman's to-do list, so I can talk to him, and we can look at maybe bringing that back in 2023.
I wonder if a wonderful resource for this particular program might not be our terrific organization here in the city called Serving Our Seniors. They tend to be somewhat of a clearinghouse for a lot of items for older folks, and I wonder if your organization would reach out to them, or perhaps we could jointly reach out to them and make Ms. Dougherty there, Sue Dougherty, aware of this. They would certainly be more than happy to share the good news with this. Commissioner Pajali, you got a question?
Yes. I wanted, does this money flow through the county?
Yes.
The county applies, and then they give some to Huron and Vermillion and Perkins Township, and then the city?
So the county applies for the overall grant, and right now, the city of Sandusky is, we have $1 million every two years, is what we were just awarded. And a portion of that goes to the city of Sandusky, a portion goes to Vermillion, and then the rest of it goes to the county and city of Huron.
Do you know what the amount is this time around?
It varies. It's basically the county gets the overall pot, and then we divide it out based on population. So I believe that we can assist. It's more unit-based to about, I think, the city of Sandusky averages about eight units.
Yeah, it used to be 250,000.
That sounds about right.
And they used to give 350 to the other political entities, but the city only got 250 because they have that other money that they get through HUD.
Correct.
So they would cut off 100,000, although the city used the money quicker than anybody else. But yeah, I think what maybe we should do is contact Erie Regional Planning and Timothy C. King and have him get some articles in the paper. He's done that in the past, and that-
Mr. King is very, I work closely with him, as well as serving our seniors, too.
Ms. Overmeyer, Commissioner Waddington and I have been around here long enough to experience a not very pleasant experience with the CHIP program, totally based on our city's performance in that. The question I have for you is, tell me about the inspection process, and is that included in your program? You're not relying on the city to perform inspections that work has been completed before you pay people? Do you have a kind of a failsafe system in place that the work's really getting done, and the people are getting value for their dollars?
Yes, definitely. So all of our inspectors are in-house. We have five. They are all licensed risk assessors and lead contractors, myself included. And then typically, they will start with the project, they end with the project. And we have in place, when they do their final inspection, they have to take a copy of the specifications with them, and they are required to check off an initial each-line item to verify that it's been completed.
You've got a better system than we had 10 years ago. I can see that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any additional questions, Commissioners? If not, thank you. Wonderful program.
All right, thank you very much.
Help our residents take advantage of it, hopefully.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we have three items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any consent agenda items to the regular agenda? If not, Ms. Myers, will you present the consent agenda, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, 2022 Budget Amendment Number Six. Item B, East Side and West Side Interceptors Cleaning Project Change Order Number One, and final with CNK Industrial. Item C, Erie County General Health District Board of Health Contract for Vehicle Inspection Services.
Commissioner, having heard these ordinances and resolutions, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole?
Moved to accept the consent agenda and declared that all ordinances and/or resolutions, as drafted and presented to the commission under the consent agenda, should take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or solutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion? Ms. Myers, do you call the roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
And now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Those ordinances and resolutions are passed. Ms. Myers, do you present item number one on our regular agenda?
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds to the Erie County Community Foundation for the Erie County Imagination Library, an affiliate of Dolly Parton's Imagination Library program, declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion? I believe we've talked this concept to death at our last meeting, so if we don't have any additional discussion, I'll ask Ms. Myers, do you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, do you present item number two, please?
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed WWTP wastewater treatment plant secondary digester number three clean-out project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion? Ms. Myers, do you call the roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Thank you, Commission President, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I'll start with the donations. First, Loris Printing has offered to replace the graphics on Sandusky Fire Department's fire safety house. They will be donating the materials and the labor to design and install the new graphics. This donation has an in-kind value of $3,695.14. Thank you to Craig Hofer and the staff at Loris Printing for seeing the benefit that the fire safety house provides to this community and for their generous donation of time and expertise. I'd ask for a motion to accept that in-kind donation.
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion? Without objection, the motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. With our thanks.
Next, the city of Sandusky Recreation Department would like to thank David Stedman for the $500 donation to the Red Popcorn Wagon Fund. The donation was given in the amount of Lynn Noda Graff-Wall-Stedman, and will be deposited into the endowment account for the wagon. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion? Without objection, the motion will be approved, hearing no objection, that motion is approved.
Next, before I turn to new and old business, I wanted to turn it over to Brendan, our law director, to give an update. We've had some questions from Commissioners and others on the ballot initiative, and so we wanted to give him a chance to provide an update to the commission and the community on that situation.
Thank you. All Commissioners, I've been asked to provide an update on the pending charter amendment and litigation. As you know, the city recently received charter petitions too late to be placed on the November ballot. Upon review of those petitions, the city rejected a proposed charter amendment based on an application of the law regarding charter petitions at the time. Recently, a few weeks ago, in fact, the Ohio Supreme Court ruled that the law the city relied upon no longer applied and ordered the city to hold a special election for the charter amendment once the Erie County Board of Elections certifies that the petition has enough valid signatures to qualify for submission. The ruling appears to have changed Ohio law that the city of Sandusky and other municipalities have relied upon for years, and has caused confusion regarding how the city is to handle petitions for charter amendments, both this one and those in the future. For those reasons, the city requested clarification from the Ohio Supreme Court, and the city has not received a response on that yet. The city is fully complying with the order from the Ohio Supreme Court. As soon as the city receives a final ruling from the Ohio Supreme Court and the Erie County Board of Elections certifies the petition has enough valid signatures to qualify for submission on the ballot, the city will present an ordinance to City Commission to place the charter amendment on a ballot at a special election.
Thank you, Mr. Heil. I would encourage any Commissioners that have questions regarding this issue to contact Mr. Heil individually, trying to avoid public discussion of items that obviously are embroiled in litigation. I'm sure he will make himself available to each of us at his convenience and at your convenience, both.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole?
Yeah, I don't need to get into the details, but you, did I hear you say that they turned in the documents late? Was that the first statement you made, that it was too late? I could have swore it was three days before. We received that documentation for them three days before the day it needed to be turned into the Board of Elections.
It was too late for the placement on the November ballot, per timelines required by the Board of Elections.
Because we held it up.
No.
And the only key here is, you got the stuff in time, and I don't have a problem with going through the process here, but we're not passing this off on to the people who passed the petition. Their stuff was turned in a timely fashion, before the deadline, and for whatever happened after that, that's fine, but let's not say that they turned it in too late, because they didn't.
Commissioner Poole, you do not know what you're talking about.
Yeah, I do, because I saw it on her desk.
And I will ask you to cease speaking at this moment, because I have the floor, and I will reiterate the fact that I'm not going to have this discussion in open public, because this is litigation. And I'm relying on our law director to speak with each Commissioner individually, but I'm not going to tolerate this being discussed in open meetings. Mr. Heil-Wal, I have you, put you back on the floor. I know that you have a piece of legislation that you are walking in regarding the settlement of a been somewhat long-in-the-tooth litigation of legislation that you are walking in regarding the settlement of a, been somewhat long-in-the-tooth litigation that goes back many decades, that we now have arrived at a settlement. Can you share with us what that is?
Sure, and I don't know if the clerk-
I think I'll ask the Commission clerk to read the ordinance, and then we'll go through the process.
Yes, Mr. President. We are requesting an ordinance be passed authorizing and approving a settlement agreement and release between the City of Sandusky and MNE LLC relating to quiet title action, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Hile, if you would give us an explanation of what we're looking at.
Sure. Briefly, what you have before you is an ordinance approving a settlement agreement and release between the plaintiff in the matter, an MNE LLC, which is a local business, actually, and the city. This matter dates back to over 23 years ago, when the city started to reroute the Old Arthur Street, and vacated a portion of the Old Arthur Street, and that has led to a property dispute, mostly between private parties, but also that the city has unfortunately found itself embroiled in. This is to release all the claims against the city for $15,000. Additionally, the city is paying some litigation costs that we've incurred for a survey and some other things throughout the litigation. And then it would include a release of all claims by the plaintiff against the city from that litigation, and would end the city's involvement in the matter for once and all.
Questions or comments for the law director? Ms. Myers, will you call a roll on the motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Turn back to our city manager.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, the Sandusky Police Department is currently conducting new coats, hats, and gloves, in sizes infant to adult 2XL. Our community impact officers deliver these to members of the South Side and Richmond Empowerment Group in December, so they can be given to children in need. For Sandusky Fire, they were awarded $661.23 for the 2022-23 Ohio Emergency Medical Services Grant Program through the Department of Public Safety, Division of Emergency Medical Service. Approval for the grant was received in March of '22. The funds will be used for the purchase of EMS equipment and supplies. The amount granted is much smaller than previous years because COVID funds that Public Safety had received. For Public Works, the Columbus Avenue Lift Station suffered structural damage resulting from the train derailment over the weekend. Norfolk Southern said that the city could hire a contractor to secure the building for safety and perform the necessary emergency structural and electrical repairs, with full reimbursement from Norfolk Southern. I'm requesting a motion granting permission to expend sewer funds to perform these repairs that will be determined by the city and the selected contractor. I'd like to ask for a motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second discussion. No objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved.
Thank you. Also, Mojer has mobilized to begin interior demolition activities in the first and second floors of the former administration wing at the Justice Center. The public should still enter and exit through the existing public entrance by the parking lot. Access to the Sailing Club will be maintained through this phase, which is expected to last into spring or summer of 2023. We would like to extend a huge thank you once again to the Sandusky's Gentleman Club for their help with the citywide cleanup. I'd also like to thank all the city staff that stepped up that day. And the streets and traffic staff will begin citywide leaf collection on November 14th. Once finalized, the schedule will be posted on the city's website and social media pages. There will be a drop-off area for bag leaves near the Marquette Drive entrance to the service center, starting October 24th through Friday, January 20th. For questions about the city's leaf collection program, please call 419-627-5884. And finally, for Public Works, in preparation for the holiday season, horticulture staff have started to remove flowering planters in various locations throughout the business district and waterfront. In coming weeks, they'll be stringing lights in Washington Park and hanging light pole garlands and banners along downtown streets. For planning, work is nearly completed on the city's first art box project funded by the Public Arts and Culture Fund. Darlene Wood, a local artist, has transformed the utility box at the intersection at Cleveland Road and Sycamore Line into an art piece telling the story about Sandusky's Little Italy neighborhood. There is funding available for five more art box projects, and we encourage local artists to apply by visiting the public art page on the city's website. And for recreation, the sixth annual Race Before the Game is scheduled for Saturday, November 26 at 9:00 a.m. at Cameo Pizza near Central Park. Ohio State and Michigan fans can run or walk their respective courses through the streets of Sandusky to complete the Script Ohio or Block M routes. Race day registration is available at 8:00 a.m. the morning of the event, or online sign-ups are available at www-run-signup.com/racebeforthethegame. Let the best team win. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
I guess, as city manager, Mr. Klein, I talked to the police chief earlier today. The underpass is open on Columbus Avenue, and who determined that it was safe to run the trains or run, you know, drive cars underneath there? Does anybody actually go out and look at that? Was there an exterior, somebody looked at the walls and the top? It looked like a mess.
Mr. Klein, it looked like you might know the answer.
Through the Commission President, the underpass is closed to vehicular traffic, but the bridge was determined to still have structural stability, and that was Norfolk Southern's determination. They told me they had people looking at it over the weekend. I have not seen a structural report or anything like that, but they did fix up everything on the surface as well, and repair the rails that were needed to be repaired. And I did, I was out there when trains operated on the south track and on the north track. I didn't see any movement or vibration. That doesn't necessarily mean that they're structurally sound, in my opinion, but that's up to Norfolk Southern to make that determination.
Additional questions for city manager? Not, we'll go to items of old business. Any items of old business? Items of new business? Any items of new business? I have some housekeeping here. My notes here from my clerk tell me that I need a motion to schedule two public hearings for the November 14 meeting by the Planning Commission recommendation for a roundabout from their September 28 meeting. A is for a vacation of public right-of-way located contiguous to 301 Superior Street, 420 Superior Street, parcel 5962001. May I have a motion for that hearing?
So moved.
Second. Been a motion and a second discussion. No objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that public hearing is set. Second, public hearing would be for a zoning map amendment of the proposed parcel created from the vacation of a public right-of-way located contiguous to 301 Superior Street, 420 Superior Street, and parcel 5962001 to be zoned public facilities. May I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved, and that public hearing is set. Any additional items of new business, questions? Are there any public comments on any items that pertains to city business? Please step to the microphone and share with us your name and address and your thoughts.
My name's Tom Baskin. My address is 815 Bardshire, and I'm very disappointed in Mr. Hile's summary of the current status of the charter. My understanding is the Ohio Supreme Court has rejected your appeal for reconsideration. They said that the order of the 23rd is live, and the clock is ticking. You were directed, and I'm going to target this to the seven Commissioners, because you're in the line of fire. You are going to be found in contempt of a court order of the Ohio Supreme Court at any time. Mr. Hile, you think it's funny, don't you? It is not funny, and I know a couple of you Commissioners who do not agree with this. You couldn't possibly agree with defying a court order when you are the ones who are supposed to be upholding the City Charter. You were directed to follow Section 82 and schedule a special election 60 to 120 days out. I don't understand what you're dragging your feet for, but there is a lot of other things that could be coming your way, and it's going to embarrass the city terribly. So I don't know where you got your claim that this is still a live appeal to the Supreme Court. It's over. They rejected it. So somebody better get busy and get this on a calendar. I know that Mr. Hile, Mr. Murray have active law licenses. I know Eric is currently not active, but there are repercussions that could come from the Ohio Supreme Court on this. I don't know what the, I just can't make sense of it. I suspect the Commission is not communicating. In fact, I think there's probably a third guy right here who would not defy a court order. But that's who's on the line. The order was directed to the seven Commissioners. The public is getting angry, so you don't realize the silent majority out here who do not agree with defying court orders. Thank you.
Additional comments from residents?
Tom Lamarka, 20648 Street. Greetings, Commissioners. The recent train derailment took place on Saturday, and coincidentally, as I was walking Saturday morning, a citizen, and I see lots of the citizens when I'm walking, I walk downtown almost every day, but a gal mentioned to me that she fears for the falling rocks all the time when she's walking underneath a damn subway, and wanted me to bring it to your attention again, that the rocks are always falling down on Columbus Avenue. Well, although we had tank cars fall down. And so my question is, we have the tank cars come off the tracks, and so Norfolk Southern says, go ahead, City of Sandusky, take care of fixing that up. And I know that the question came up previously, who's responsible for maintaining the concrete and the steel on that? And I don't know that we ever really got an answer, but it seems to be that maybe the city's responsible for maintaining these trestles. They're all in horrendous condition. They all need work. So it's time that we start paying attention to those trestles and pay a little less attention to the downtown perimeter, take care of what's holding up the trains, and maybe it was a split rail, who knows? But let's take a look at that, and how much wax is now in our sewer system that's going to clog up the sewer system, that's going to flood our basements again on 44th, 46th, 42nd, East Follett and all of that, because we've got hundreds of thousands of gallons of wax down in the sewers. Now, I mean, Supreme Court order, you know, I don't know how you ignore that. I mean, if I was ordered to do something by the Ohio Supreme Court, I think I'd be getting a little bit nervous about it and reacting and doing. To ignore it? Well, I guess that's on you. But I know the petitions were delivered in plenty of time to get it on the ballot, but for the city Commissioners to ignore it and say, or have the attitude that, hey, it's just going to have to be a special election at the expense of the taxpayers, well, that's not good enough for me. And I think that the deal or the transaction that was struck with the Maruus Brothers, that the water line and the street repair on Meg Street got put on the fast track so that they could go ahead and perhaps start a condominium housing commercial development at Battery Park, should be slowed down, backed up, and that should be put on the ballot as well. The citizens should have an opportunity to be voting on what's going to be happening at Battery Park now, not after it's done. Thank you very much.
Comments from the residents? Not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.